The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the regular Board of Education meeting on March 14th, 2022. I would start the meeting tonight by going through roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please?
Smith.
She's excused. Oh, sorry, no.
No, I'm not.
No, she's not.
I'm actually here. Thank you.
She's not excused.
Thanks, Eric.
Yep, welcome. Glad to have you.
Well, here.
McCoy.
Here.
Vanden Hoewel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All right, we have five board members are present. The other two are excused and will be joining us later. With that, I would look for a motion to convene into closed session.
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851 A and F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of a specific person's preliminary considerations of specific personnel problems or investigation of charges against specific persons, except where par B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely have substantial adverse effects upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit, for the purpose of holding hearings under Wisconsin statute 120.131C and E3, pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically, to wit, negotiating strategy for collective bargaining agreements between the district and collective bargaining units pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, to wit, superintendent performance evaluation, and pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to be come involved, more specifically to wit, review the notice of claims and potential allowances or disallowances of claims.
Is there a second?
Second.
Beth?
Smith. Aye. Becker.
Aye.
Welch.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Vanden Hoewel.
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. We will convene in closed session across the hall. Thank you. Be back at six o'clock. All right, welcome back, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the board in open session. We met at four o'clock to go into closed session. At that time, we took roll call. All board members are present for closed session. We're now also joined at the table by Superintendent Steve Merly. We're joined in person and virtually by members of his cabinet. And then we're also joined by members of the inner-city student council. It looks like we have Emily Cupp and Greta Hans. I think we're correct. Yep. So Emily and Greta are with us on the screen. We'll get an update from them here shortly. But now we will go on to item C of our opening activities, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, then final opening activity is mission statement, and I would ask board member Brenda Warren if she'd be willing to read the mission statement. Sorry, I sprung that on you, but I thought.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Brenda. All right, moving on then to open forum, we'll start with our inner-city student council report, so I will hand it over to Emily.
All right, thank you. So for the ICSU report, we just have a little bit of good news this month. So from East, East will be having a buff puff intramural volleyball tournament. East Rhapsody and Red Show Choir and Red Devil Jazz performed this past weekend. Five students qualified to compete at the state forensics competition next month. From West, West is hosting a drive to collect various supplies to help those affected by the current crisis in Ukraine. One West student will be moving on to the state forensics competition. West's musical Be More Chill premiered this weekend, and West also collected 20 units of blood in their recent blood drive with the Red Cross. From Prebble, Prebble recently hosted both the high school and middle school solo ensemble festivals. And this past weekend, the Prebble Center Stage Show Choir took home the title of grand champions at the Southwest Packerland Powerhouse Competition and received awards for best band, best choreography, and best crew. And the Prebble Rendezvous Group took first in their division and fourth overall. Prebble FFA and the Vet Science, had the Vet Science and Nursery Landscape teams take first in their categories at the recent competition. And then I'll hand it over to Greta for Southwest's good news, and she knows a little bit more than me.
Yeah, so this week, we have our Do Be Nice Week, which is basically just, um, we like celebrate a staff member and be, sorry, celebrate a staff member, and we have an assembly, and we pretty much just have a lot of clubs come together and just do something nice for another group in the school. Our show choir just recently hosted the Packerland Powerhouse Showcase. We have a few students moving on to Nationals for DECA in Atlanta, and that's coming up soon. Um, and then I'm blanking on the last one, but yeah, so we have a few students moving on to DECA Nationals, and that's everything.
Right, any questions for Emily and Greta? Thank you very much, ladies. If you want to join in on the conversation, anything that we're talking about tonight, just want to encourage you to participate. Turn your cameras on, and we'll try to let you join the conversation. So thank you for being here. All right, and then next we have public forum. I just want, as a reminder, now that we are live streaming our meetings and we have people in person, people have the opportunity to participate in public forum in both modalities. So we still can have people register and call in, and then we also have the ability for people to come to our meetings and speak to us in person. We do have one person who's registered to speak, so I would ask Joan to approach the microphone. Joan represents the first person to speak during public forum live to the board in quite some time, so Joan, thanks for being here. Joan, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to make your comments.
Should I repeat this? First of all, I just want to say that a favorite quote of mine is that "Education is the bedrock of a just society." Education is the bedrock of a just society. Another favorite quote is "Education is the great equalizer." How many of us in this room have been elevated by education? And so in Green Bay and in society in general, children need to feel proud of their school, their school district, their teacher, and themselves. And when these things are harshly criticized, it erodes the pride, the confidence, and the morale. So I'd like to say, let's fix the things that need fixing, and let's speak positively when it is deserved. And I'm here primarily out of gratitude. I have gratitude to this Board of Education. I think that you are tremendously courageous. You have buoyed my spirits through this pandemic when everything else, not everything else, but so many things were going poorly. And I thought, does anybody care? Does anybody look at the really the right thing to do? And I look around and I think, ah, the Green Bay School District, they're making good decisions. So I want to thank you for making good decision. One decision after another. You have my utmost admiration. And I want to thank the administration. You get to carry things out. And it's tough situations. It's not just COVID. It's things that I don't even know about, and some of them make the news. But I am buoyed by your leadership. So thank you to the administration. And then, of course, there's the teachers and the staff. Of course, what would we do without them? They carry things out day in, day out. I am so proud of what they do. You know, I didn't send my kids to public schools, but my husband and I knew how important public education was, and we did not flinch to support public education. As I said before, it is the bedrock of a just society. So I just want you to know how much I appreciate you. I'm on the Brown County Board as supervisors. I represent part of Alaway, but I'm not here in that capacity. But you, as a board, and as a district, and as a community, have done things to lead this community. And it is really heartfelt, and I know other people feel the same. So when you face criticism, I want you to know that there are a lot of people that are so proud of you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Joan. Moving on, we have a recognition section on our open forum tonight, and I think I will hand it. Should we go to the speakers first, or do you want me to go? Okay, let's go to the speakers first. So we have three people who would like to address the board with regard to recognition. So I don't know if there's a certain order here. Carrie, you're first on my list, if you'd like to go first.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Green. And tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my family. And we are very proud parents of three graduates of Webster, Washington, and East High School. Our children were academically prepared and culturally competent to meet the challenges of life beyond their Green Bay area public school experience. The many opportunities offered by the district directly contributed to their personal growth and their well-being. Our teachers, staff, administrators, and this board, of course, are the driving force toward mentoring success for all of our students. So in keeping with that thought, our family extends their deep gratitude to Brenda Warren. Her contributions to this district began long before her board tenure. She was active as a volunteer in her son's schools, and you may have seen her as a guided reading partner, a book fair co-chairwoman, artistry and residence chairwoman, a PTO member, a popcorn maker, a field trip chaperone, a post-prom volunteer, a senior lock-in chaperone. And most importantly, she ran and coordinated and managed the East High concession stands for several years. Not only did Brenda share her time with our schools, but so did her family. Her husband, John, formed, led, and coached some summer boys soccer teams, which helped develop the East High School Boys Soccer Program. And I'm pretty sure John, her physician, gave the fourth grade puberty talk to my son's class. And so many of us fondly remember your parents driving up from Madison to provide musical entertainment at the annual Webster Bring Your Favorite Person to Breakfast celebration. Grandpa Beachley was on the piano, and he played by ear, and Grandma Beachley played the snare drum to accompany him. It was memorable. Brenda's school board service is an extension of her sense that the education of the children of our community is of the utmost importance. And as a result, she pursued a second doctorate, and it was in education. It is through her highly principled, well-informed, and extremely thoughtful decision-making skills that she garners high praise and deserves great respect. This passionate commitment to lead and serve our school district will not be forgotten. We are a far better school district and community because of her generous service. And finally, I'd like to conclude with a quotation from Amanda Gorman. "When day comes, we step out of the shadow aflame and unafraid. The new dawn blooms as we free it. For there is always light, if only we're brave enough to see it, if only we're brave enough to be it." Brenda, thank you for being brave enough to be the light in our school district and our community. We love you.
The next registered speaker is Katie Maloney. Oh, is... Oh, you did. Okay, I wasn't sure. Is... No.
Who am I competing with?
Dr. Langenfeld.
Oh, Michelle. She's on the line. We can take her.
All right, she's on the line. I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure if you were queued up and ready to go, so I thought it would go faster, so. Michelle, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you would like to go next, you certainly can.
All righty, and I'm assuming this is President Vanden Hoewel?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, okay. Good evening, and thank you, President Vanden Hoewel. I'm Michelle Langenfeld, and members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Merly. I'm calling this evening to wish Dr. Brenda Warren well in the next steps of her journey and to extend gratitude to her for the many years of service to the Green Bay area public schools. I had the opportunity and privilege to learn with and from Dr. Warren during my tenure as superintendent, and I'd like to just share a few of her many contributions. Brenda was uniquely qualified to serve on the board. Not only are she and her husband, John, proud parents of three graduates from the district, but also as a trained pediatrician, she brought expertise and experience addressing the needs of the whole child. In addition, as a lifelong learner, Dr. Warren also pursued and obtained a doctorate in educational leadership with a focus on literacy and dyslexia. As a board member, Dr. Warren rolled up her sleeves and went to work, always going above and beyond, working in partnership with her fellow board members to make policy changes for the betterment of students, adopting curriculum, supporting the hiring of staff, and representing all that she served. She invested countless hours of time, talent, and treasure, resulting in significant contributions and improvements to the educational opportunities and experiences for each and every student in the district. And I'd just like to highlight some of the many contributions that she made during her time on the board. Dr. Warren always kept students at the center of her board work and actions, recognizing and valuing the uniqueness of each and every child. She took the time to understand their needs, academic as well as social and emotional. Her support of the development and/or expansion, as well as implementation of an extensive portfolio of learning opportunities and experiences and supports during her time on the board is noteworthy, and I'd just like to share some of those. Beginning with the opening of seven specialty schools without going to referendum, from the John Dewey School Academy of Learning to Leonardo da Vinci, Dr. Rosa Manocca Hill, Forte Oak Learning Center, Northeast Wisconsin School of Innovation, and the two Head Start Schools as well. And then also the development and implementation of personalized learning pathways, from the K-12 ID to the Fine Arts Pathway and Institute STEM and STEAM Opportunities K-12 to the Stadium Bay Link Bridges Construction and Renovation Dual Language, the Online School, Howe Community School. And it should be noted, I think the most important part of this is that her work never stopped once these were approved by the board. She continued to invest numerous hours serving each of the school communities and programs, ensuring their success. Many times, this included attending meetings and events well beyond the school day and on the weekends. Along with fellow board members and administration, Dr. Warren also played an integral role in the successful strategic planning and passing of several referendums, both structural as well as operational. And being the action-oriented person that she is, Brenda attended a significant number of the 70-plus community meetings to share the district needs and answer any and all questions. And as a result, the community said yes to investing in much-needed resource and improvements to schools as well as the opening of a new school building. In addition to that, the operational referendum was successful, which resulted in averting significant program and staff cuts as well. I think what's really important to recognize is Dr. Warren also gained the trust and respect of school leaders, teachers, support staff, students, and families, as well as community. She did this because she was ever-present and stayed actively engaged across the district and in the community, always a willing and empathetic listener, seeking to understand and working together to problem-solve. And I want to thank you, Brenda, for treating all, even those that you didn't always agree with, with dignity and respect, always seeking to find that common ground that would result in the best outcome for students. I also want to thank you for what you've done to recognize and appreciate publicly and honor the hard work of students, teachers, support staff, and families. You believed in them, you affirmed them, and recognized and always gave the credit where credit was due. Dr. Warren gained the trust and respect of the community, the greater community, both at a state and local level, while also serving on the board. She was recognized by community partners as a leader who was not only very knowledgeable, but also a person of very high standards, who was willing to work collaboratively for the betterment of children. So Brenda, I want to thank you for saying yes, for representing the district on those various committees with community partners in leadership positions, from Achieve Brown County to the Medical College of Wisconsin, to the Greater Green Bay Area Community Foundation, serving as a board member, advisor, and champion for K-12 children. And then at the state level, Dr. Brenda Warren was well-known and respected for her expertise and insight by education leaders and legislators from both sides of the aisle. Thank you, Brenda, for your commitment and unwavering advocacy to ensure a high-quality public educational experience for all kids, spending countless hours writing and providing testimony, sometimes waiting to speak for upward of six hours before a legislative committee. But in doing so, you opened doors with legislators who reached out to engage in productive conversations focused on the needs of the district's children. And Dr. Warren was also selected by the Department of Public Instruction to co-chair the Wisconsin Informational Guidebook on Dyslexia and Related Conditions in Response to Wisconsin Act 86. Thank you, Dr. Warren, also for giving of your treasure. Dr. Warren and her husband, John, were founding members of the Green Bay Area Education Foundation, as well as participated in countless fundraising opportunities to students and supported the needs of students, staff, and families across the district. You know, these are just many of the great things that Dr. Warren has done in partnership with her colleagues and with the community, students, and staff. But I also wanted to recognize that there was much more that I didn't even speak about or touch upon. So in closing, I just want to say to you, Brenda, thank you, and I wish you and John the very best. And to you, President Vanden Hoewel, and all the members of the Board of Education, your job is extremely challenging. Brenda, you demonstrated how to do the work with grace and how to do it with integrity. And to all of you on the board, you continue to do this very hard work at this very challenging time, and I want to thank you for that. And thank you for always conducting your board work ethically and with the highest level of integrity, keeping the mission of the district and the vision of the district for success for all children at your forefront. Thanks again.
Thank you, Dr. Langenfeld. Last, but certainly not least,
Well, what's not to miss after that? I would like the minutes of this board meeting to reflect my deepest appreciation of Brenda Warren's contributions to the students and families of our district and community. We reap the benefits of your many talents as a pediatrician, your PhD in educational leadership with your specialty in literacy, and most importantly, your determination that our students, including your three sons, deserved every opportunity to succeed. I have no doubt that every decision you made as a board member was driven by what was best for the children, given the depth and breadth of extreme circumstances during your tenure. You've taken the Hippocratic oath of first, do no harm, to heart, and our district is better because of that. I wish you and John the best as you begin this new chapter of your lives, dealing with the next generation of Warren guys. Have fun with your family, my friend. You will be missed.
Finally, I'll hand it over to Steve.
So one of the traditions that we have here in the district is to provide a piece of artwork to outgoing board members. Yours is still in the process of being framed, but I did want to share with you some insight from our artist. So she writes, "My name is Belle Saladino." Now, you're gonna have to visualize a light bulb, okay? "I chose the light bulb as my reference picture because the texture was intriguing, and in society, light bulbs usually portray ideas as if it's shedding light on the darkness. I choose to see it as shedding light because everybody has had their darkest times, and that light is the thing to bring you out of that darkness. I love the idea of light hidden within. It speaks to me on a deeper, personal level. Other things about me are, I love math and numbers. I wanted to be an accountant or a money manager when I grow up. I love to create art, even though I get frustrated when I don't know what to make. I also love astrology and crystals." And then she writes, that was her type part she hand-wrote on here, though. "I hope you enjoy the piece." There's a little heart after that. Belle Saladino, 2022. "I hope you enjoy the piece." There's a little heart after that. Belle Saladino, 2022. So we will have that framed. We will have that to her soon.
I'm sure this is agonizing for you, and I'll try to keep this really brief. So I just want to, I just want to kind of go, something that Carrie Green said, she used the word principled. And so when I think about Brenda, that's a word that I think often of, principled leadership, words like trust and respect. You know, sometimes it feels like those are in short supply, but I have seen this up close for some years now, and I've seen it change our board, and I've seen it guide our board. And you've been a mentor to me, and I've learned a lot from you. And there have been many a time when you've talked me off a ledge. Let's just be honest here. So I just want to say that I will miss your intellect. I admire your intellect. I've told you that many times. But also, your complete distrust in ego or anything that isn't good for kids. So I will miss that, and I know that's not easy to replace. So I will echo everyone in this room that spoke, everyone who might be watching this, to thank you profoundly for your service. I think you're the finest public servant I've met or had the privilege to work with, and I say that, I mean that. So anyway, thank you.
Or no?
Go ahead.
I don't think there's more. If you'd like to say something, go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you to everyone who came. It's amazing to listen to and have a rundown of all the things that we've done in our district over the 18 years. I've loved serving on the school board. I will say the last two years have been a little tough, but it's been something I've very much enjoyed and has felt like a real profession career for me, and I've worked very hard at it, but it's been a labor of love. And I've served with some great boards. I don't think we've, in my 18 years, we've never had a board that didn't put kids first. We've never had a board that, where that wasn't what drove every decision that they made. And that's made serving on the board even better. We don't fight about things that are not important for kids most of the time. I don't think we do, actually. And I'm so proud of this district. Especially these last two years, it's been so difficult for everybody, our students, our parents, our teachers, our administration, our everybody. And somehow, we're pulling it off, and I know that there will be more work to come, but I have faith in this board and faith in the next board, faith in our leadership. It's been a really... As a pediatrician, kids have always been important to me. And it's been, I left my profession after seven years here in Green Bay to be a stay-at-home mom, and this was a perfect landing spot for me to continue to care about kids. In fact, I always thought that, as a pediatrician, I had less impact on kids than our teachers do and our staff do in our schools. And I realized that after time, and so to have a place in education where I know I'm helping to support the people that are really making a difference for kids' lives, I saw them for 10 minutes, maybe 20 minutes, teachers see them for hours and hours for very long stretches of time. And I'm very excited about what's in the future for the district. There's some things on the horizon. I'll be following from a distance and watching along as things unfold. So thank you again, everyone, for all your kind words.
Right. I don't know how we're gonna transition from that, so I'm gonna request that we just take a quick five-minute break. I have to step out for a second. We'll come back in about five minutes. Thank you.
There it was.
All right, I hate to break up the party. I mean, yeah. Thank you for coming. Thank you. I'd appreciate it. All right, we will resume the board meeting. Picking up with item number four, the consent agenda, before I look for a motion to approve, are there any items on the consent agenda that someone would like removed for discussion? Andrew?
Yes, I'd like to remove I and J.
All right. Items I and J will be removed. Any other items? All right, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero. That takes us to number five, items withdrawn from the consent agenda. Andrew, I'll hand it to you for items. We'll take I first.
Every time I see a large item with a large dollar value on consent agenda, I really don't think it should go there, so I'm just gonna move to take it off every time. There, I have no, I have no problems with the, you know, with the laptop refresh. It seems to be a reasonable schedule of replacement as just being a larger ticket item. I wanted the separate vote. I don't have, I don't have questions. I appreciate the fact that staff feedback was solicited. The staff is happy with the machines, so we're gonna refresh an update on a schedule with similar machines. So that being said, I think large items need a separate vote.
Sure. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to...
Well, we can make a motion.
I move, yeah, I move to approve the certified staff laptop refresh purchases as presented.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Discussion?
I don't really have anything to add other than I just wanted to say that going through this memo, I was really happy to see that they have requested feedback from staff members and that so many of the staff members are actually pretty happy with the technology that they have. So in the response, 1,137 responses, I was really happy to see that too. So I just wanted to add that to the input.
Any other discussion? All right, Beth, do you want to take a voice vote, or do you want to boast it? Okay.
Smith?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vandenhuevel?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Clayton Warren?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item J, ICSC Constitution Revisions, Andrew?
Yes, I just want, I think I spotted one, but I wanted to find out what, you know, what has changed in here.
Emily, are you prepared to speak to the process, the change process?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit. So as we went through the past year and this current year, there were some issues that arose that we had not had terminology in the previous constitution for. And there's been some things that even without results from COVID or things like that, that have just like become kind of outdated, and we wanted to clarify those processes. So one such example of like changes that we made is clarifying that there's five representatives and then like our alternate process. So for example, we want to make sure that there's one ninth-rated alternate so that in the event that, or so that we don't have the event where the ICSC from one school is consisting of all, let's say, seniors. And then next year, they have to start from scratch, and they have no one who really knows. So it's just kind of clarifying those sort of processes. I don't personally have the document. I think that might be with either Ms. Hornson or Wiegand with the highlighted revisions. Sorry, I'm sorry about that. But then the other thing that we have clarified is some procedures where if students are ineligible due to like code violations, updating things like that. One thing was there wasn't really terminology for John Dewey, so we clarified that with the growth of John Dewey. We want them to have two representatives, just kind of procedural updates as we went through and experienced as much as we did last year, and things kind of changed how ICSC works.
Warren?
I did note that at the bottom of the document, it appeared to, that it hadn't been revised since April of '07. Yeah, so this is a long time, so it probably was in need of some, a giant refresh. So I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Andrew?
So a couple of things, I guess. This, it seems to me to be pretty, you know, it's pretty substantially important to know what's changing. And I also, I was pretty sure we had taken and passed some, at least some revision much, much more recently than '07, did we not? Okay, I'm gonna move that we postpone action until next month. I don't know that I would necessarily feel, have strong concern with anything, but this just seems to be a pretty, pretty big deal. And we don't have a, it would be normal to have a comparison document, and we don't.
Yep. Go ahead, Emily.
If I could interject, one reason that we brought to this meeting specifically was because with our elections coming up, some elections might be starting, so we wanted to try and, it's not a rushed process because we have been working on it since last year and with our officers, and then Ms. Hornson and Dr. Wiegand has revised it and looked over it as well as Mr. Flood. So we are trying to get it out before our next election so that it could take, take hold before this next process so that we're all like, kind of set.
You're not changing any election policies, are you? There's no change in the numbers. It's still, it's still voting for, for five, is it not? It's still a 30 to 50-word statement, the ballot.
So that's where I said that John Dewey hadn't updated amount of members to represent them because they didn't have that terminology, so it's just from either, I don't remember what the original one specifically said, but they now have two members, so that does change that process. And then there was clarification about the process of choosing the alternates because we had legislation about that in there, but it wasn't being routinely followed at all of the schools, and there is different processes taking hold, so we wanted to make sure that we provided a uniform way for the appointment of alternates and just kind of reinstated that.
Yeah, if I could add, I have the document in front of me, and it says that the quorum for the council to meet shall consist of, it was originally 10, and it's now 13 voting members. So I think it just changes so that we have an extra three members that are able to vote. once this passes.
But when you say are, are able to vote? What?
Sorry, that one might have gotten a little bit misconstrued, that was the quorum numbers, that's not like our actual numbers and we didn't set a specific number because one example of things that we're running into right now for issues is that some schools don't even have enough to fulfill their five and two alternate members. So there's no set numbers, but we do have the quorum number in.
So that's another, I guess that's, that's another thing, but we already had policies in place that schools had to have five members and, and two alternates and that's a it's a concern of mine that some schools are, and it's not the students' fault, uh, is, are disenfranchised by not having by not having seven members, so I guess rather than doesn't John yeah, I, I guess I would be so John, is the only difference in actual voting that John Dewey elects the regular and the alternate and the others have five elected but two appointed alternates? Is that the only difference as far as elections? Because nothing else would be in a hurry to do this month.
Sorry, could you clarify that?
Well, if, if the reason to do it, if the reason that it has to be done this month is because of elections, but nothing's changing about elections except maybe Dewey? Because it's still, you're still electing five voting members of the spring and having two appointed alternates and a ninth grade appointed alternate, right?
So, this is our issue is that we had, uh, this is where some schools have been stepping in and instead of appointing the two alternates, based on like student council and things like that, they've been using their alternates wa, through the voting process of like just making it so the top five get a position as like the regular members and then the last two are they're not supposed, the last two are the, the alternates as assigned by the schools, but they're not supposed to be that way. So it's just clarification of the way that that alternate appointment process is supposed to work and that's like does deal with the elections.
But does the, I, I don't think the, the policy, I guess the the bigger point here is we have, we have, this would create one thing, this would create one thing that we have in the policy manual and something different next to it, and I, I think it's important to have a, a comparison document, I, I also think it's probably not that, I mean, I know, I know why because I think I was, um, involved in talking to the council about doing it once, the reasons that you might have elected and appointed, but in actual reality, given how much interest there is, you know, the people who are just just finished next in the, in line might be the logical ones that would be chosen to be appointed.
So two things, one, we just got the red line version uploaded to Board Doc, so it's there if you wanna quick see it, and then I'm gonna go to Melissa.
So this is an administrative rule, this is not the policy, and changes to the administrative rule do not require board approval. We do bring them to the board, the administrative rules to the board when there is substantial wholesale change that goes along with a policy change, but this really does not require board approval and the ICSC could have just adopted these changes, but they did choose, Mrs. Hornson did choose to bring this to the board for your review, but in the end, the, the board does not have to approve these in order for these to be adopted because they're the administrative rule, they are not the board policy. That's the only thing I wanted to add.
Thank you, so this is a norm that was developed over many years and shame on me for not pushing harder to have it codified into policy, the the understanding that was reached was that I, the ICSC constitution would be placed into rules to elevate it to a different, to a different level. So so we have, the, the red line is in there now?
Yes.
So this is replacing four forty-one point one, cuz it has a K code on it right now. Four forty-one point one rule, replacing that?
They just have the old policy number on that, I'm gonna guess that they didn't update that on the top, but that the language is the same as to what's in four forty-one rule.
Revised actually June, it was a small revision, but revised June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, so it, it had been a long time, but it has not been a long time since. Okay, I'll look at the there, there's, so there, there is history behind why the amendments, constitutional amendments have to be approved by by the board and, and by ICSC, there is, there is history behind that that requires a two-thirds recorded roll call vote of ICSC and approval of the majority vote of the school board. It's, it's because, it's because it's that important, I'm just trying to get the red lined version to, after refresh. I had, I had to go completely out and back in for.
Take your time.
Yeah, that, um. So what, what is the significance of committee? We, we had that was not new language, we, that was put into a policy that committees would have student rep, student members, did not?
Was that directed to me or I just?
Uh, I think it was to, it was probably to Melissa.
I believe that language is in the one hundred series where we made the changes to reflect the committee structure. I can find it for you, Andrew.
Yeah, I guess, I I just don't see what the rush is because I don't see where this changes where this changes the elect, the rules have always said the top five are elected. If a building's council just appointed the next two except for the ni, incoming ninth grader, then they appoint the next two. I'm concerned that this is a backdoor removal of the, of the important requirement of quarterly meetings with the administration that didn't happen for several quarters that they were supposed to, and it's, it's not about the rights of the officers to meet with the administration, it's, it's about the rights of the students to be represented directly in that meeting between the officers and the superintendent, and it wasn't, it wasn't happening, and it's the, it's the students that have a right for the ICSC officers to meet with the superintendent and designate each academic quarter, so I would prefer further discussion to try to, than having to vote no on something like this to having to, um, I just don't see anything that have, impacts the fact that schools will be voting for for five and Dewey will be voting for one and then there'll be the appointed, the appointed members.
So because we just added the red line, Andrew has other questions, I guess if it still allows you to, to go forward with your, uh, elections, Emily, if we just table this for one more, uh, meeting, we bring it back in, um, in April and that will, will give Andrew time to think about it and, and certainly, then we can, can compare those two documents.
Maybe could I also suggest if we've had questions, I, as individual board members, if we can, if you could forward those to me and then I'll collect them and I'll get those to Emily, and then we can make sure that we've got as many of those asked and answered as we can before we get to the next board meeting. Get those to you ahead of time.
Emily, so I have a motion to, to, uh, table till next month? Till the next regular board meeting?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Emily, I just wanna add, I think this document is phenomenal, it's clear that you, uh, and your leadership put years worth of work into this, um, obviously doesn't require a board vote, I think it's great that it would, I would be prepared to vote for it right now, but I think that just so that we can have, uh, unanimous approval of this, we'll just wait, uh, one more meeting and, uh, be able to give it the thumbs up, uh, next month.
It's mostly about, it's mostly about the quarterly meeting with the officers because adults, a, adults, including myself messing up and not making sure that the quarterly meeting got held is not a reason to amend the constitution to make the quarterly meeting optional. And it's a, it's adults, including me, that wasn't paying attention to the schedule last year and some of those got missed during COVID and I was the one with the historical note knowledge who should have said something and didn't, so.
Yeah, in my, in my opinion, this is a, a student-driven policy, the students have put their work into it and this is a gross overreach of an adult standing in the way and telling the, the students they didn't do a good job, but we'll talk about it next month.
I never, I never said the students didn't do a good job.
All right, let's, uh, take a vote. Beth, you wanna do a voice vote? Okay.
McCoy?
No.
Clayton Warren?
We're voting to table this until next month, if.
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Welch?
No.
Warren?
No.
And in Hoover?
No. All right, motion failed, uh, five to two. So there's someone who wants to make a motion to approve?
Were we going to approve this even though it doesn't need to be approved?
Correct.
Oh.
So is there, uh, another motion on the table?
I move to approve the revisions made to the ICSC constitution in twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion, go ahead Brenda.
Um, and it's, it also was part of the consent agenda, so it wasn't part, you know, had we just approved the consent agenda, it would have just gone through as part of that.
Okay, I understand about that part, but I don't if the rule doesn't need to be that's what I'm, that's what I'm having a hard time with, about the rule and the policy thing.
The advisor asked that we, we do this apparently, according to Emily, it sounds like, um, Ms. Mrs. Hornson requested that we have a, a, we approve this, maybe? Okay.
But it, it does say the constitution, constitutional amendments require a two-thirds recorded roll call vote of the ICSC and approval by the majority vote of the school board, it, it's, it is in there. Did, um, did it have the two third, and it did have the two thirds recorded vote of the ICSC then? Oh, sorry, Emily, did it, it did have the two thirds recorded roll call vote of the ICSC?
Um, I'm not specifically sure about that one. Sorry, I, there's been a lot of changes that we've updated, so I'm not specifically sure if that was one that was or was not.
No, but I mean, these, the, the changes that are proposed, did the council vote on it?
Oh, yes, 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 yeah.
And it was a recorded roll call vote and it was two thirds or more?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, okay, then I'll make a different motion here, I, I will I mean, it's an, it's an, it's an amendment. I, I'm concerned that the quarterly meetings are gonna, the quarterly, the officer quarterly is, which have been an important valuable thing and every superintendent has said so are just going to, are, are just going to, to disappear here. Because it, it's have the opportunity to meet instead of the officers shall meet once per quarter. And we did, we did kind of, we did kind of lose that. And I think it's for, again, things that reduce meetings are not just about the officers, it's about all the students having the right to have students face-to-face automatically in front of the superintendent in that official meeting and the board is behind it, that's why this became part of.
So are you seeing the officer quarterly or the quarterly meetings?
Well, the, the, a, all of it, yeah, the officer, the, I mean, the quarterly, the quarterlies with the board are still there. Right, those aren't, those aren't changed. I'm just trying to protect having the officer quarterlies too. And not just have them go away because sometimes they weren't held because of mostly adults messing up and not causing them to happen.
Why is there reason to believe that the quarterly officer meetings would go away? Cuz the opportunity to meet with doesn't, it's not saying that there isn't an oppo, they're having the opportunity to go through with it, so I just don't see the issue with the verbiage there.
Oh, I thought it, did it, did it say shall meet before? And now it has, shall have the opportunity to meet or or is that just a typo and it says shall will with the district administration? If, if this means, if this as written means that there will be, there will be that meeting every quarter, then I guess I'm not too worried about this.
What if the kids don't wanna meet? Do they have to because you want them to?
And not because I want them to, because the students have a right, the, it's, it's a right for the students to have the representatives in front of the
Right, but there, there were times this year where the students said, we don't have anything to meet about, we don't wanna meet, and you were saying, well, they have to, they have to, they have to, and you were pushing.
Yeah, cuz I thought we owed, I thought we owed them to catch up when we blew it for six months at the most important time during COVID and didn't bother to meet with the kids.
If they wanted to meet, they could have called the meeting. They could have said, hey, we would like to, to meet with the board, they had the ability to do that.
Yeah, they've, you know, you know historically we've required, uh, we've relied on that to be scheduled through adults, we had new adults coming into the picture. I accepted some responsibility cuz I know the history behind it and that, hey, we're coming up on a quarter and I'm the one who didn't say anything. And I owned up to that, didn't I? So I just wanna make sure that the meetings get, that the meetings are able to be held so that the so that the students, the students are are represented, I've never, you know, yes, I get it at the end when we were trying to do this thing of pack in the meetings so we get meet the formality of having four in a year, okay, that was maybe a little silly, but I just wanna make sure, there, there was a lot of, again, there were a lot of work that went into this to make sure to gradually over the years expand this so that there's more opportunities and that officer quarterly is something that every, all superintents that I remember have thought that that was a valuable thing, if this means if this means that the, the students have the right to have it, then I, I guess I'll I, I guess I'll stop.
Here's what I'd like to see happen here. That these, these pass because they're the work of these students and the whole process is supposed to be about, it's supposed to be student-driven and student-led and, and they have an advisor, um, and I would like, you know, this to pass as, as it has been proposed. I feel like the board is way too involved in this and, um, and it's time, it's, you know, time to let these students' voice be heard as they have proposed.
Okay, I'll, I'll vote for it, but I'll, I'll probably want to, and maybe it should have been this way all along. Maybe if, maybe from the board side, you know, maybe the constitution should say the right to meet and if it's important enough, and I hope board members would agree with me that, uh, we could direct the administration. important enough, and I hope board members would agree with me that the, we could direct the administration to say, you know, make sure you're scheduling all four quarterlies. So it is important unless you do a different thing that you can do. Oh, I don't need this to take all night. I'll, I'll vote for it. I think it's good work, but I am, I just don't want to see what I think is a very valuable meeting that's maybe not had the same impact during COVID go away mostly because it wasn't done during COVID.
All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second to any other discussion. All right, Beth, we're ready to vote.
Becker?
Aye.
Welch?
Hi.
Smith?
Aye.
Brandon Hoover?
Aye.
Leighton Warren?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Emily, please pass along um our appreciation to you and the rest of the inner-city student council for your work on this.
Thank you all for your attention to this too. Thank you.
Yep. All right, uh, moving on, committee reports, uh, education committee is first and that update will come from committee chair Andrew Becker.
All right, thank you. Um, we had um, we had on the February twenty-eighth meeting, uh, we had a, we had a few different items. We did have uh resource adoption. We looked at some adjustments for high school AP Englishly Literature and Com- uh, Composition, High School AP uh, middle and middle school math, one through three curricular resources, as well as the IB Math at Franklin that requested some additional resources. Um, we had revisions for some of the career technical education courses and a new employment experience course. That's very valuable because it, it bridges a gap allowing students to have some um students, sometimes there might be a valuable work experience that be, can be connected to the curriculum and we like to have a credit earning opportunity, but because it doesn't fit into certain lanes, it maybe wouldn't have qualified. This allows us to uh to do that if it's not exactly youth apprenticeship or it's not exactly um a co-op program. And then we also talked about uh GBA PS redefine ready, which is a really great thing that we're working on. It's our own additional set of standards that we're going to be reporting on. The state report card is still there. Uh, and redefine ready will put some of, will give us the opportunity to show how we're doing with some of our own standards that we've created that aren't part of the the state standards. Um, and quite frankly, um, most of the things on there are a, I, I would argue a a stronger or more challenging level, um, number of percent of kids in uh, taking post-second, uh, taking post-secondary courses and so forth. So this is not creating a document that just automatically looks good to be side by side with us, but rather are we living up, you know, when we say college career community ready, when we talk about more and more students having these opportunities to participate? Um, are we're going to start grading ourselves on it side by side with um the state report card? So, uh, members, do you have anything else to add that we talked about? Okay. That concludes the report.
All right, thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to the operations committee and that update will come from operations committee chair Dawn Smith.
Thank you. Um, we met on February twenty-first. There is a bunch in board docs, a bunch of attachments that um you can go out and look at. We had a packed full agenda. I'll give you some highlights, but there is a lot of information out there in board docs attached if you want to look into any of it more thoroughly. Um, we had John Troutman from CLA come in and give an update on the audit. Um, we got an unmodified opinion, which is excellent. Um, total assets, I have eighty-six million, liability eighteen million, fund balance sixty-eight million. Um, our unassigned fund balance is at eighteen percent, which is very healthy. Um, and our fund balance went up by seven million dollars, which was great news. Um, Angela Robles, Sarah Noah came and did a semi-annual financial report. We passed the balanced budget in October and we're on track with that. Um. We talked about using CARES money to address future deficits that are coming. Um. The actual year-to-date reviews are running slightly ahead, which is due to timing and that should all level out. Our top expenditures are um salary and benefits, which is typical year-over-year. Um. Equalized aid is about sixty percent of our aid from the state. And next year, the mill rate will be under five dollars. We got um an update on S R spending. DPI requires that we claim quarterly. Our most recent claim was December thirty-first. And we have spent all our funds under S R one and our gear funds have all been budgeted. We got an update um on insurance and that's all on the agenda under action items, so I'm not going to go over that. And then Josh provided us an updated um membership report. Um. It was updated after the second count, January seventh, two thousand and two. Uh, the big thing I took away from this is it was, the numbers were wonky because um, the January count date was the last day of final exams and there was no middle school on that day. So that means that there's a whole bunch of um verification that needs to happen so that we are able to count those students that weren't in attendance on the actual count date. So um, we have seen, the number I have, the cumulative change since September of twenty sixteen is we are down by two thousand three hundred students. Um, we've seen an increase in enrollments in three, four, and five-year-olds. And um, all local districts, other than DePur and West DePur, are seeing the same declining enrollments in the past two years that we are seeing. Josh is expecting um with our January count being like it is that by June, um, when we do that, June will be evened out. The other thing is we are getting audited, which is normal. Nothing crazy. We were expecting it. It's a regular thing. So we will be audited for our membership count. And yeah, I think that's it. Like I said, there's tons of attachments. We covered a whole bunch of stuff in the meeting. So if you, anything specific? Um, Laura, Nancy, anything really pressing that I missed? We, we talked about a lot in that meeting.
It was a very information-dense meeting. Um, I can't think of anything right now.
Did you, we'll talk about the benefits later?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, did we have discussion about the task force? The facilities task force during that meeting? Okay. No, okay. All right.
Okay, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Dawn. And uh, final committee reports, uh, policy and governance. Looks like you guys have been busy as well. That update will come from our chair Laura Leighton Warren.
Thank you. Uh, we met on the twenty-first as well. That was a long day of of meetings for everybody. Um, what we looked at was a five-hundred series of policies which pertained to the district's personnel. And a lot of these had last been updated around twenty-ten. And in addition to looking at those, um, the legal counsel for our district as well as HR looked at some of the WASD policy resources and through that they updated some of the policies and also um made some recommendations, some revisions, some and some adoptions and some repeal. So there was quite a few. I don't even recall how many. I want to say twenty-eight or so. Um, and so those, as 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 Dawn had mentioned, those are out there available on the website to access. But pretty, all of these were pretty straightforward. Uh, it was myself, Brenda and Laura McCoy that met. And there were just a, the main one that we, I think we had the most discussion on was um five twenty-one point one, which was a code regarding um staff communications. And so that was the one we had a lot of feedback on. We, we discussed at length and uh, there was actually, based on the feedback of that committee, it was brought back and a lot of revisions were made to the language. Um, and so um that will actually be up for approval coming up later on the agenda, all of these. And um, those are the main, main updates, just um based on the feedback that we had to um soften the language and to um make it sound, I don't know, less, it was, we just wanted to make it sound more um agreeable for everybody involved, as much as it was four twenty-one point one was there to um ensure that all staff communications going either direction were, were where they should be. So that's all I have.
And it went on also to um preserve employees' First Amendment rights.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Nancy.
Was there anybody who had anything to say about five, um, five thirty-eight? Was there any? It's the employee supervision and evaluation revisions. The one thing I saw in there is that they were um talking about how it wouldn't be the sole reason to give a teacher like a bad um evaluation, but they were connecting it to how students, how well students do. And if your students don't do well, then it could be counted against you on certain tests. Unless I was reading it totally wrong.
Oh, we'll have Melissa respond to that one. Can you direct me to what section you're on, Nancy?
Yeah. Section B is evaluation of technical operational support staff. That section? So B one, B two?
B two.
C? Nothing in this policy is intended to diminish the expectation that the district's admin team and its licensed professional staff will regularly annual analyze the results of mandated student assessments to identify trends in the data to assist individual students and for the purpose of improving the district's curriculum, the district's programs or the district's approach to instruction. So uh, two B says that you cannot, you, under no circumstances, this is state law actually, will the results of any state mandated or federally mandated assessment administered to students be used? Correct, correct. As the sole reason to discharge, suspend, or formally discipline a teacher or as a sole reason for non-renewal. Correct. That's the state law.
Put your microphone.
But it still can be used.
Well, it can be used as a factor, but not the sole reason. So you would lo- look at, as the language in in section C talks about with respect to the, the use of those, that information.
Melissa, if I could draw attention to two, A, three. Superintendent Schools and Learning must have received the board's advanced approval for the manner in which it is proposed to use the results of such assessments as part of any individual's employ, individual employee's performance evaluation. So if we did want to do that, that would have to come through them, through me, to you for approval.
Okay, is this a standard thing across the districts? Other districts have this? Because, you know, especially now when we're, after a pandemic and everything isn't and we're going to try to make good, good decisions for our students. And it just seems like now it's just not the right time to put more stress that, I mean, you hear about teachers who change test scores and stuff because they're so worried about it. I mean, it seems like just another stressor to me. I'm sorry. And I know it says it's this, not the sole reason, but I don't, I just didn't feel comfortable with this. And if you can say things to me to make me feel better, that'd be great.
Well, we've adopted the Charlotte Danielson model for evaluation and I don't know if um anyone from HR is on or anyone from curriculum, but that isn't the Char- the Charlotte Danielson model. So, um, and again, as Steve pointed out, if if we were to use that in the course of the framework for evaluation, that would have to come to the board for your approval.
On an individual basis or for?
Well, that would be discriminatory if we used test scores for individual teachers. So it would have to be the rubric or the framework we would use for evaluation, not for just one teacher. So we wouldn't propose to non-renew a teacher, one teacher on the basis of that teacher's test scores. It would be a whole host of factors that would play into any sort of non-renewal.
But right now, right now, the, as, if this policy passes, the number of state and federal standardized assessments, assessments that are even allowed to be part of the mix are zero because the administration has to ask of the board to bring one in, right? Is that correct?
We, we have to do the federally and the state mandated assessments. The ones that we're looking at are the district assessments. So this one speaks specifically to those state or federally mandated ones. So for those that are required, that we have to do, uh, that either the state or the federal government uh chooses to impose on us, if we want to include them as part of the assessment system, then as we build out that a system, that system, uh, we'd have to bring those to you for approval.
Okay, I'm sorry. It sounded like, it sounded like that was both yes and no, so I must have missed something here.
So, oops, sorry. So uh, this is only pertaining to state and federally mandated assessments. And if we chose to use those, we would have to bring them to you for approval. So this is the.
Right, right. So of course, we're, there are things we're doing and we have to do. The assessments will happen. But right now, none of them are part of teacher evaluation.
Right.
Under this policy, if you decided assessment X, Y, Z is great, you'd like to put in teacher evaluation. It's still not in there until it comes. So it does have the guardrail of having to go to the board.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, um, good discussion whether we, oh, I'm sorry, were you finished with your report?
Yes, I was just going to thank Melissa.
Oh, okay. Um, a lot of policies that we'll vote on, so that conversation would have, whether it happened there or happened when we got to that item, was going to happen. So um, as we go through uh the different votes on the agenda tonight, some of them have been vetted and will pass. And others, if people want to have similar discussions, we certainly can do that.
I just want to add one more thing that, thank Nancy for bringing that forward, because I think that's why it's so important for some of these things to make sure we come back to the bigger group, because that's one of those things where your perspective as a teacher is going to be able to identify those things that I know that that wasn't something that stuck out to me either. So thank you.
That's how that's supposed to work.
Yep.
Thanks. All right, uh, item number seven, uh, this is a um, discussion with potential action staff pandemic support, which is a carryover from a conversation that started back in December. Um, and Steve, I think I'll hand it over to you first.
Thank you. So we have two uh days of professional development left, April first to May twentieth. Right now, that's scheduled for uh that professional development time in the afternoon with students in session in the morning. The question is, could we move professional development to the morning and then make those uh afternoons off for students and staff? Um, one of the questions that resulted from that is what would that do to our hours and minutes of instruction? Um, right now, if we don't have any more inclement weather days, we would not need to seek a waiver from the Department of Public Instruction for hours and minutes. We do have a couple of schools that are close. Uh, if we had one inclement weather day, we would have one school right now that would fall under that uh threshold of hours. If we had a couple of inclement weather days, a day and a half, um, we'd have several schools that would fall into that category. So uh, from that standpoint, uh, at this point in time, if the board were to act on it and the weather were to hold, um, we would not need to uh be concerned about uh seeking a waiver for hours and minutes of instruction. Um, and also to keep in mind as a caveat, we do have an inclement weather day built into the calendar. Uh, so if we did uh have bad weather between now and then, we could make that day up on that time and still be um within that hours and minutes of instruction. So as a board, um, you've got fairly extensive latitude right now if you choose to make that move for one or both of those days. um, within that hours and minutes of instruction. So as a board, um, you've got fairly extensive latitude right now if you choose to make that move for one or both of those days.
Any discussion or feedback? Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so, so right now, it's a half, half normal day and then half teacher workday, staff development. So this would become, if we did this, it would become, students would be off and teachers would be off for half the day and would the other half of the day then be all district directed or?
We'd follow the same directions that you have for the day right now. So right now, um, you've allowed some limited latitude for professional development, but most of the rest of the time is teacher directed work time. Uh, so if we were to make that shift, we would do the same activities that we were going to do in the afternoon and the morning, which is again fairly limited professional development that, uh, you've authorized, and the rest of it would be teacher work time.
Go ahead Nancy.
Um, I think that this would be good for families then, because they didn't have, they could get a full day of daycare, whatever. Is that going to be helpful, or is it going to be a hindrance to them, do you think?
Correct me if I'm wrong, with the general feedback that we've gotten is half days are very difficult. Dropping their kids off, you gotta work for a couple hours, you pick them back up, what are you gonna do with them midday? So that, that's been pretty consistent feedback about half days in general, which is why in the next year's calendar, our, our calendar team worked so hard to get rid of as many of half days as possible, so.
And I just offered to, I apologize, I didn't write this in the, uh, notes there, but both of those days are Fridays. So just an FYI, those are not mid-weekdays, those are Fridays.
Go ahead Laura.
Could they just be days off somehow, rather than a teacher workday? Could they somehow be?
You could do, certainly do that. Uh, we have, uh, contract days for staff. Uh, and right now, that's considered a contract day uh, for the teachers, so that would be something that you would have to waive.
Yeah, my, in my opinion, I mean, the, the time in the classroom is, I think, important, and I think that this is a good compromise to say, hey, you can come in, you've got work time in your classroom, I want you to take advantage of that. Some people will stay the full day and do that, and others that can sneak out and, and get half their day back. I think that's a, feels like a good compromise. Is someone interested in making a motion?
Um, I moved to convert the last two school half days on April first and May twentieth to full day off for students and half day for teachers as discussed.
Right, and I think as he, as he, uh, like, posted for students, you might just have to amend it, uh, Andrew, so that it says half workday for teachers.
But she's still saying that you would need to amend because it's. Right, it was supposed to be a full day for teachers.
If Andrew made the motion so that it was a half workday for teachers, would that then grant the authority to do that?
But I think what was discussed is letting teachers go at half day, which then would impact the contract. So the teachers would need to stay there the full day, but it would be a full workday for teachers instead of a half day.
Well, unless, unless half of it was without attendance required in the building. Right?
Half days.
Right, we have half days, we, we have half days that they have to be here. I mean, I know you can't break further than half in salary employment, right?
Melissa, could we make the other half day a remote workday? The motion. Thank you.
So if we do want the full day off for kids to, yeah, if we wanna have teachers able to, you know, um, have the freedom to be ver, you know, work remotely half the day or, or whatever, it I mean, if I, if I'm jumping way too far ahead, and we were just talking about making it a full teacher workday, but I thought I heard others talking about a half.
I think you could make a motion for the, uh, full day off for students. Uh, and you could direct, uh, the administrative team to move the professional, well, into the morning and give us latitude, uh, and flexibility to determine, uh, work schedule for the afternoon.
Alright, I guess I'll I'll just withdraw my motion if there's.
Go, go ahead Laura.
I thi- I think with, with what we have here is, um, discussed, I think this would meet the needs of the teachers. I offered the idea of a full day off, but this sounds like good flexibility with the half day, workday, I mean, and then professional development, then the other half. They'll figure that out as needed.
Address the students.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion. Just to make the, the the two half, school half days on April first and May first to full days off for the students.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So there's an understanding that there is gonna be some flexibility and probably a lot of flexibility in the second half of the day, because I'm not usually real excited about, um, yeah, we'll get back to you later on. X, there's a lot of moving parts in that, but I'll, I'll go with it. This time, I think the understanding was there that we don't have to be there till three thirty PM, and we're gonna move up professional learning to the morning, so, okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Beth, I think we're set to vote.
Leighton Warren?
Hi. Hi.
Brandon Hubel?
Hi.
Warren?
Hi.
Welch?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi. Motion carries seven zero. Alright, uh, moving on to a lengthy list of action items, um, we'll start with item A, notice of change in adopted budget. Is there a motion?
I move that in accordance with the provisions of Wisconsin statute sixty-five point nine zero five A. The adopted changes to the previously approved twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget amounts as presented be approved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Alright, Beth, we're set to vote.
A vote has been entered, and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Alright, motion carries seven zero. Um, for items, uh, action items B through H, uh, with regard to, uh, health insurance, I'm gonna abstain from those votes, uh, due to family members who reside in those categories that are compacted by those rates. So I'm gonna ask that, uh, Vice President Laura McCoy, uh, coordinate those votes.
Okay, let's move on to eight B, in, uh, health insurance plan rates for active employees. Any discussion? Questions? Okay. Who's doing the motions? Oh, no, Andrew, I think. You, oh, no. You're doing the motions, Andrew. Okay, go ahead. Okay. I move that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three health insurance rates for the five hundred dollar deductible plan, the fifteen hundred dollar high deductible health plan with the health reimbursement account, and the minimum essential plan for active employees as presented be approved.
Second. A vote has been entered, the motion has carried. All six board members, um, have voted in favor of Brandon Hubel abstaining.
Okay, uh, eight C. Health insurance plan rates for retirees. I've, I move that the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three health insurance rates for the five hundred dollar per person deductible plan, the five hundred dollar deductible plan, the fifteen hundred dollar high deductible health plan with a health reimbursement account, the minimum essential plan, and the prescription plan for retirees as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Go ahead Beth.
A vote's been entered, the motion has carried. All six board, board members voted in favor of Brandon Hubel abstaining.
I move that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three dental insurance rates for active employees as presented be approved. Second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, Beth.
I'll vo- I'll vote yes, and then I'll try to refresh and get it working again.
A vote's been entered, the motion has carried. Six board members voted in favor of Brandon Hubel abstaining.
Okay, next is eight E dental insurance rate for retirees. I move that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three dental insurance rates for retirees as presented be approved. Any questions or discussion?
A vote has been entered, the motion has carried. Six board members voted in favor of Brandon Hubel abstaining.
Next, next is eight F. I move that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three vision insurance rates for active employees as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Beth?
A vote has been entered, the motion has carried. Six board members voted in favor of Brandon Hubel abstaining.
Next is eight G voluntary vision insurance for retirees. I move that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three vision insurance rates for retirees as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
A vote has been entered, the motion has carried. Six board members voted in favor of Brandon Hubel abstaining.
Next is eight H flexible spending and health reimbursement account administration. I move that the contract with diversified benefit services, Inc., as the flexible spending account and health reimbursement account administrators be extended as presented be approved. Any discussion, any questions?
A vote has been entered, the motion has carried. Six board members voted in favor of Brandon Hubel abstaining.
Just for anyone who's watching this or at home, these have been vetted. We've had discussion about them before. Um, and we're, we're just moving through this very long list of, of votes and approval. Um, so, just wanted to add that, but it's your show now.
Alright, thanks Laura. Back in the game. Alright, uh, moving on, so, yeah, we'll go through these. Brenda's gonna read, uh, the motions. Someone would like to have specific, uh, discussion on any of them, certainly grab our attention, we'll do so. Otherwise, um, all of these have gone through the different committee work, and some of them, uh, are pretty straightforward. So, uh, Brenda, I'll hand it over to you. Item I, equal opportunity employment and nondiscrimination.
Thanks Eric. I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy five eleven, equal opportunity employment and nondiscrimination as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Beth?
A vote has been entered, the motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item J.
I move that revisions to the Board of Education Rule five eleven, equal opportunity employment and nondiscrimination complaints procedure as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright Beth?
A vote has been entered, the motion has ke-
Motion carries seven zero, item K.
I move that revisions to Board of Education Policy five twelve, workplace harassment and or bullying as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay Beth?
A vote has been entered, the motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item L.
I move that Board of Education Rule five twelve, guidelines for responding to and reporting workplace bullying and harassment be repealed.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright Beth?
A vote has been entered, the motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item M.
I move that Board of Education Policy five twenty-one point one, staff communications and lines of responsibility as presented be approved.
Well, second.
Any discussion? Andrew?
Um, yes, thank you. I'm, I'm concerned that as written here, that this um, either prevents district staff from bringing concerns right to board members when they want to talk about things. Um, or or doesn't specifically restrict it, but looks like it does and therefore might have might have an adverse impact on that. We get emails from teachers. I don't think, and I hope no one wants to discourage that, but what I see here when I read the text is that it's supposed to just, everything is supposed, it could be read as all employees are expected to refer anything through their supervisors.
Go ahead, Melissa.
So the language you're referring to, Andrew, is already exists in Policy 870 and in Policy 161. It's the same language. And the Policy 870, I'm sorry, Policy 861 was last revised by the Board of Education October 15th of 2018. And I don't have the date in front of me on Policy 870. I'm sorry. So it's the same language.
Andrew, could I, before you go, can I ask, Laura, you said you guys had pretty extensive discussion on this. Could you just recap that and anybody else who's on that policy? I'm just curious about what that looked like.
Sure. I'll share my perspective on it, and then I'll let the others weigh in. I thought that because this was something that was covered in the policies that Melissa had shared, that I understand, we talked a bit about the need for, you know, following a chain of command, protecting employees, free speech, protecting the employer, all of those things. I just thought because of, we just recently had a lot of feedback on assessments, just different things. I just, I thought that this was something that because we're looking at morale, we're looking at retaining teachers. And I just thought it was something that we could wait on, that I think that all these other 500 things, it's a new, it's an adoption of a new policy. It's something that I thought it could wait if it's already covered. We've certainly been operating with staff communication and lines of responsibility prior to this. So I thought just perhaps the timing and the language was a big thing, which they already corrected the language piece of it. So those are my thoughts, was just maybe to look at this down the road, if it's really something that's needed. Or are we working okay with the other policies that are already covered and cross-referenced in that policy?
Dawn?
If this is already in other policies, can I ask why we need this? Isn't that redundant?
Yes and no. This policy is really a policy to protect staff regarding their ability to communicate with their supervisor and transparency for staff about the lines of communication. Bits and pieces, as I mentioned, are in Policy 161 and 870, but it also outlines for staff how they should address their concerns so that there's better transparency and clarity for staff. And then it also, Section D talks about First Amendment rights, employee's speech and expression of matters of public concern. And then in the enforcement section indicates the district should not take or tolerate any unlawful adverse employment action against or retaliatory conduct toward any employee who chooses to engage in legally protected religious or political expressions, legally protected concerted labor activity or other forms of legally protected expression. And then Section B, similarly, the district should not discriminate against employees who decline to attend meetings about or participate in any communication about religious or political matters. So it really was an all-encompassing policy that brings in bits and pieces of those other policies. It's not unusual for policies to reflect similar language through various different chapters of policies. The 100s is policies on the board powers, 800s is policy on the public and the community, and then 500s is policies regarding staff.
Nancy?
Okay, so I've got my policy, the 870 up right now. And, okay, so you've changed words wording then, or am I just not seeing, like? Okay, I don't, the part that really bothers me is A2, in the event of disagreement between employee and their supervisor. Now, I'm not thinking about, like, can I go on vacation? I'm thinking about, like, curriculum things and stuff like that. Is this the wrong place for that? Like, if, let's take assessments, for example. If you felt, you know, as a teacher, assessments were too much, and then you went to your principal, and your principal said, well, no, 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 and then they went to the next person, and then they say, then you just can go back down, and it seems like it can just be cyclical, or is, am I just missing the boat here?
No. A2 is really the chain of communication. So if you don't get agreement with your supervisor, you move it to the next level supervisor, and then to the superintendent of schools and learning. So it's the chain of command. And then that next level supervisor may decide that the issue lies within their discretion of the lower supervisor, or take the issue up. So it's really so that the next level supervisor doesn't assert their authority where they don't have the authority. If the issue is, if the issue is curriculum, that.
Let's just use assessment, because how long have they been saying too much assessment? And, I mean, do you know what I mean? And it seems like they've never been heard, so.
Well, according to this policy, that would guarantee that they could be heard, because it would advance to the next level of the chain of command, because principals are not in charge of assessment. That comes from the teaching and learning department. So it would advance to the department or the administrator that does have the authority over that area. And it would make sure it didn't get stuck where there is that disagreement, where that supervisor doesn't have the authority to make a decision.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, but, so I'm looking at implementation A, so 2A, 1B. So just sticking with the example of assessments, because we got phone calls, we got emails about assessments, and teachers saying there's too many, and we'd like you to consider this. My, I could see where someone would read 2B and say that I am expected to not send this email to the board because I'm expected to refer it to supervisors. And that's how it would look to me. And even if that's not the intent, or even if there's some other policy somewhere else, if this is the policy I'm reading, I might be concerned about sending that letter.
It says, "to the attention of the appropriate supervisor," not their appropriate supervisor.
Right. It's still, it's still, that would look to me like it's not something, it's at least confusing about whether I'm, whether this is gonna be a problem for me to send this letter to the board about the district's assessment policy.
Section C, implementation 2C indicates that, except where expressly authorized by board action or by the superintendent or necessitated by the legal duties related to the position held by board officers, individual employees are not expected to engage in work-related tasks at the direction of board members. So that's talking about employees not being required to do individual tasks that an individual board member would be. And then it talks about if individual board members do contact an employee, that's number two. And then in the event an individual employee communicates with an individual board member pursuant to the duties and responsibilities of the position, the board's expectation is that the individual board member should contact and work with the superintendent in resolving the employee's issue and concern. There's no language in this policy that indicates employees are not permitted to contact board members.
That's right. I guess I'm more concerned about, more concerned about the appearance of that as opposed to explicitly saying you can't, but it, I still don't understand how a lot, how all employees are expected to refer concerns regarding district programs and operations and other matters requiring supervisory administrative attention to the appropriate supervisors. I mean, if we're just sticking with assessment, and I think communication worked with the assessment policy. We listened to the communication. We got somewhere, some things started happening, but I could still see someone being about to write that letter to the board saying, no, it has to be to supervisors.
Are we able to just remove 2AB? Can we just remove that? Can we remove B? You could remove B, or you could add a C that indicates employees are not prohibited from contacting board members.
Okay, I'll move to, I'll move to make an amendment by adding 2A, 1C. All employees have the right to speak to board members on any matter of concern.
Go ahead, Nancy.
When I was reading a lot of the letters from people who were concerned about things, I overwhelmingly heard things like, well, I hope I have a job, or I hope, I hope my principal isn't mad. I mean, you can go back and read those, and it's in there. So I just, I just think that kind of reinforces that instead of the other way.
As well as the language in 2, Section Roman numeral 2D, and then Section 3AB, which explicitly would prohibit employees from losing their jobs over contacting board members, which doesn't exist in any policy right now.
All right, so Andrew made a motion to amend.
I'll second.
Second. All right. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, Beth, do we want to take a voice vote on the amendment?
Leighton, oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Does that, as the motion has stated, does that foresee, and we're kind of doing it on the fly here, does that foresee any sort of challenges that would be different than what you had proposed as a different, like a C? Okay. Unintended consequence, I guess. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you. And I.
I'm Smith.
I.
Warren.
I.
Bandon Hubbell.
Hi.
Welch.
I.
McCoy.
I.
Becker.
Hi. My motion carries 7-0. Moving on to item N. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, thank you. Good catch. Then on M, was the motion on the, did we read that motion? And we had a second. Okay, so now we need to vote on item M. Thank you. The amended item M.
Oh, you can't. Okay.
Okay. So yeah, let's take a voice vote on that.
The amended policy 521.1. McCoy.
I.
Bandon Hubbell.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Warren.
I.
Smith.
I.
Well.
I.
Leighton and Warren.
I.
All right, motion carries 7-0. Now we can move on to item N.
I move that Board of Education Policy 522, staff conduct as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Beth, we're set.
A vote has been entered. The motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries 7-0, item O.
I move that the revisions, that revisions to Board of Education Policy 522.5, staff involvement in community and political activities as presented be approved.
I second.
Any discussion? Andrew?
So this is all, like, what is, what's, what's missing here, and what, what extra protections or what extra restrictions are created here that weren't there before? Okay, so it looks like it's just all restrictions? I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to, it's a, it's a whole new area, and I'm just trying to make sure that there's not any unintended, I guess unintended consequences that are missing here, it looks like, because it's fairly, it's adding restrictions. There's certainly, there's certainly things in here, like using public facilities on an election that was never okay, and is against other laws that are reflected here now that maybe weren't reflected before. So if someone is wanting to do, say, a nomination paper for office, and they're a salaried staff person, and they're circulating it on their break, they can do that, or they can't do it?
Are you referring to Section 2D, no employee shall make use or permit use of school equipment or materials for the purpose of solicitation, election promotion, or defeat of any referendum candidate for public office legislation or political action?
No, I'm not talking about that one, because I would assume that means you can't do it with the school's equipment and paper, and you shouldn't. But C, if I'm circulating, if the staff is circulating a nomination paper for someone for office, even though it's in the, they're doing it during breaks, because you're not supposed to leave it out in a break room, you're supposed to just, you know, acquire signatures. So I would be concerned that because it's in a building, that that follows against C.
Section 3 indicates this policy does not apply to use of district facilities by employees for events or activities that are not within the scope of their employment and that are, that are held pursuant to the district's policies regarding facilities used by third parties. So when you're on your break, you're not within the scope of your employment. So circulating nomination papers during your break and on paper that was not the district's paper would be permitted.
Yeah, so I saw where it says that during, during break periods, you can have the conversations, but it didn't also say that you can do other things. So there have been other times that you've said that if it's not specifically stated that you can do something, that you, you can't. So I'm just, just trying to make sure here, because it says.
You're, well, during breaks for hourly employees.
I'm talking salary.
Okay, so salary employees, particularly teachers, have a bylaw half-hour duty-free lunch period. So that is, and they also have, they are allowed to use the break room. So it says, no school employee during hours for which pay is received. They are allowed to use the break room, so it says no school employee during hours for which pay is received, or while the employee. Is otherwise acting within the scope of their employment. And then engage in any activity for solicitation, election, et cetera, et cetera. It would be permitted.
Okay, so the, the or concerns me a little, but I guess I don't, not enough to move an amendment for it. I just want to make sure that we're. My. My opinion on everything would be maximum allowable ability of, of free speech. Including controversial, um, including advocating for, for any candidates. Uh, not using district stuff and during people's, you know, break time and not, not to students, so if that, if this is. Covered there, then, okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, Beth, we're set to vote.
A votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item P.
I move that Board of Education Policy five twenty two point one employee freedom of expression as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Andrew.
I guess specifically, I wanted to ask about under implementation. And. Um, so that'd be three, and then. A, which is speech. And then two. Mostly, mostly to B, although. I guess, again, from my perspective, I would want to limit the employee's speech almost. Almost not at all, including if it's, including if it's to, um, if it's, including if it's to, um. You know, to hold up a sign that says Becker was the worst school board member ever. I, where's the balance of promoting the efficiency versus commenting on public concern? Because like, where would you even go that commenting on public concern would even be in something to balance or conflict?
Yep, there's just been some real recent examples of this actually, including, um, employees who comment made. Uh, racially derogatory comments based on recent movements, um, in. Various different states and they, uh, the school district terminated those employees because the. Parents in the community were outraged over their position with respect to race. And this exact language is what the school districts and the school boards. Uh, relied upon in that, um, turn, those terminations, this exact language.
Oh, I'm sorry, Laura.
I just want, I, I think that there's, um. We, you know, as a policy governance committee, we, we read through this and looked through these and I, I share some of your concerns as well, Andrew, but I also think as. I mean, even the last one that we looked at, I think, um, looking at, you know. As an organization allowing employees on their break time who are salaried to distribute, you know, I think that the. School is being generous because you also have to look at the culture you're creating within your organization and I, I think there is. Um, a certain amount of, just the example you just gave, I mean, if people are still on work time and, oh, well, it's my break, I mean, that's a, there's, it's just like a huge. A huge discussion, but I, I think with all that in mind, I feel like these are, these are solid policies that are allowing. The freedom of employees, but also, um, not to the point that it's going to be disruptive and, you know. To what we're trying to do here as a school district, so, um, I think there has to be. There ha, you know, was it, you know, freedom of speech, but not freedom from consequences, so. I think, you know, looking at these, I, I was, just want to reiterate that I was supportive of, of all the ones, other than the one that we, we spoke on already.
So. I think you just, I, I think history is not just here, but everywhere has said that if you. When you start, when you start trying to regulate speech a, a little bit, you can get unintended consequences, right? So if. I could see there being one way that an employee might use their right as a citizen to comment on. Matters of public concern, I'll give, I'll give two. I'll give two examples, um. Uh, you could have someone who, as a matter of policy, believes that. Uh, believes that the amount of immigration into the United States should be very restricted. And you could have another person who thinks that the immigration to the United States should be absolutely unlimited. Both of those are statements that are. You know, emotional, and I could see you saying the first one in such a way that is strictly a. Matter of policy, but even to say it just as a matter of policy would make some people really angry, might make you, might think that it's. Racist, um, I don't know, I'm, that's.
It, there, it has to be connected, if an employer is going to regulate speech, it has to be connected to. A- again, the language in here is promoting the efficiency of the public services it performs through its public employees. So the example that you used, Andrew, I'm not even sure that a district could regulate that speech if you're simply discussing immigration. In the example that I cited, it was derogatory statements about a particular race. When that teacher is charged with educating students of that particular race, clearly that is going to. Um, go against the efficiency of the public services that schools perform. So, i- i- and in the end, a court has to decide this, like you said, this is not something that we can have a black and white rule against. So if a school district were to weigh into that very tenuous area of First Amendment rights of. First of all, I hope that they would call me before that they would choose to do anything, and then second of all, if. I'm making a decision and advising the district in a way that would be contrary to. Establish case law as well as the First Amendment, and that's for a court to decide. But eh, there has to be some limitations on public speech in order for a public school district to be able to educate. All of its students in its community.
Well, for sure, I just wanted to know if our language was keeping, I guess I would, I would err on the side of making that harder for the district. Than easier, but if this is. Um, okay, I'm good.
Any other discussion? Alright, Beth.
A votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, moving on, uh, item Q.
I move that Board of Education Policy Staff Dress as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Beth.
A votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item R.
I move that Board of Education Exhibit five twenty two point seven two, mobile phone, mobile data device allowance agreement be repealed.
Second.
Any discussion? Beth.
Votes have been entered, the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item S.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy five twenty two point eight employee possession. Use of weapons as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Beth.
A votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item T.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy five twenty five gifts to staff and solicitations of staff as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Beth.
A votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item U.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy five twenty six personnel records as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Beth.
Been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in.
Motion carries seven zero, item V.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy five thirty wage and overtime as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Beth.
Been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item W.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy five thirty three staff recruitment and hiring as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Beth.
A votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item X.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy five thirty three procedures for staff recruitment and hiring as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
A votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item Y.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy five thirty three point one background checks as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, Beth.
A votes have been entered, the motion has carried, all board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item Z.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Rule five thirty three point one background check procedures as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Andrew.
Um, there's been some, there's been some national discussion about, um. About, and I've read it on, on both sides, uh, commonly referred to as ban the box, where. Um, you still would do your background check, but eh, to ask upfront, uh, if you've ever been. Um, if you've ever been convicted, does that. You know, does that discourage people from, from applying or subconsciously influence the reviewer? Even if the person has to say yes to something that didn't affect their, uh, job, so I just. Is this something that's on a separate background check form, or is this right, right in the initial application?
Can you point to the section, Andrew, that you're asking a question about?
Applicants one A, one file in writing in advance of employment, a statement as to whether. He or she has ever pled guilty or no contest to or been convicted of. An ordinance violation other than minor traffic violations, misdemeanor or felony. So there are places that are, uh, this ban the box movement about the, the checkbox on the application. Because does that. You know, having to say, have you ever, does that discourage applicants, does it unintentionally make screeners? You know, look at the, the, it's, uh, this is not, I mean, this is something that is a big, it's a significant national discussion. About what the pros and cons of such a thing, so I didn't want to just.
I, I'm aware of ban the box movements, the issue with public education is there's licensing requirements. So we're always going to have to ask that question.
Oh, sure, but I, I think it's, and, and in many professions there are, but I, I don't think ban the box, ban the box doesn't mean. Hire everyone no matter what their record is, I think it's more about the upfront. Nature of the thing and whether it's discouraging applicants or. Right, I mean, it. On the box isn't ban all background checks ever, uh, obviously.
So our background checks don't come into play until after you have, um. Been passed on as a referred for a position. So I, I'm not sure how that would discourage people from applying, because we don't. Background checks don't happen until after you've applied, you've been interviewed, you've been selected. Uh, your references had been checked and now you are the recommended candidate, and at that point, that's when the background check starts.
Okay, so, all, but all individuals applying for employment shall be required to file in writing. Okay, so it, it is clear under one that that's only if you become a candidate that you're doing this?
We don't, we don't have, we don't background check every individual who has applied for a position, it's only when you become the recommended candidate. You're not an employee, you're the recommended candidate.
So in advance of employment, so do, does a person have, do we have the box or do we not have the box on the application?
On the background check applica, on the background check application is the box, correct? Background checks happen, the background check process happens once you are the referred candidate for the position. We do not background check you when you submit your, your application.
Okay, does that mean that we don't background check you, but we have the box on the application? Or does it mean we don't have the box and there is no box until you're the candidate? And then here's your background check form and yes, it has a box, there is a difference between those two things.
I guess I'm confused, because you apply for the position, this, this rule, it was references the actual background check. Your background check doesn't happen till after you are the selected candidate. So you would have submitted your application, you would have had the interviews, you would have been, y- your references would have been checked. And that, that point, you then go through the background check, the drug test, the, if there's a lifting requirement.
Brenda.
So I think what Andrew's asking is when you fill out the application. Do you, are you asked, have you ever committed a felony or, and, you know, the, the language in here. Convi- convicted of an ordinance violation, et cetera, that question is not on this initial application that you fill out off of weekend.
There is a question on the weekend application about felonies, that's correct.
Go ahead, Laura.
Just, we're, right now, we're on the background check procedure, so that would actually be a whole nother discussion about the application. So those, I bring, you bring up interesting issues and, but right now, so I, that, I don't know if we actually look at them. But right now, we're just looking at the background check procedure, not the application process.
I guess the all individuals applying for, all individuals applying for requirement shall be required to, is perhaps a little confusing. But I, I think I get it now. So I'm, I'm good.
All right, any other discussion? All right, Beth.
Been entered. The motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item AA.
That the revision, I move that the revisions to the Board of Education Policy 534 Substitute Employee, as, Substitute Employees as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Beth?
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. All board members have voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item BB.
I move that the Board of Education Rule 534 Substitute Teacher Guidelines be repealed.
Second.
Any discussion? Beth?
Been entered. The motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item double C.
I move that the Board of Education Policy 535.12 Break Time for Nursing Mothers as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Beth.
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item double D.
I move that the revisions to the Board of Education Policy 537.1 Professional Learning as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Beth.
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item double E.
I move that the revisions to the Board of Education Policy 537.2 Professional Learning Support Staff as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Beth?
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item double F.
I move that the Board of Education Policy 537.3 New Educator Mentor Program as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Beth?
Been entered. The motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item double G.
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 538 Employee Supervision and Evaluation as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Beth?
Have been entered. The motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
Motion carries seven zero, item double H.
I move that the revisions to the Board of Education Policy 539.1 Supplemental or Outside Employment as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Andrew?
Uh, thank you. So we did already have, no district employee can do stuff that interferes with, negatively affects or, or creates conflicts of interest. Why do we need other language about asking your, just, I, I guess to me, what I do off, off work time, shouldn't that be my personal business? As long as I'm not creating a conflict of interest or interfering with or negatively affects. So why do we need the, the extra stuff, especially, especially all this disclosure and three A.
First, I think it's pretty routine that a primary employer would require employees to disclose any secondary employment. Second, an employee may not believe that a secondary employment would conflict or compete with the, the district's employment. I can think of a few examples that have come in play along the way since I've been here, such as teachers using curriculum that's been developed by the district to write additional resources and then sell those resources. Using some employees using district property to, to engage in secondary employment during non-work hours. So it, it's just good business to disclose that, to make sure everyone's upfront and making sure there's no conflict or competing interest. It's not to prohibit employees, it's to make sure everyone's aware of what's going on and to make sure that the employees aren't creating any issues for themselves later down the road if they haven't disclosed that.
So, but now we're, we're talking about. So if I'm a, I was pick, if I'm a, if I'm a teacher, I want to drive Uber outside of, outside of school hours. I have to, I have to disclose it to my principal. And if I, if I change it, I have to bring it to my principal. It, it just, I don't know, I'm, this is one I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with. Cause we all, we already said we can, we can deal with it if you, I don't know, it's a, it's a, this one's just maybe a little bit too much into intrusion for me. There's parts of it that are good. Like, yes, you can't, if you're salaried, you can't like work real fast and then drive Uber for one of your hours. Cause you got the rest of your work done during the stand. I, I get that. But uh, there's just too much of it, I guess, for me that is too much of a, that I'm, I, I, it's, it's a little too, it's a little too intrusive for me. So.
Any other discussion? All right, Beth, reset the vote.
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. Results of individual board member voters follows. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, no. Warren, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton Warren, yes. Welch, no.
All right, motion carries five to two, final item double I.
I move that the Board of Education Policy 539.2 Student Tutoring, Tutoring Services by Staff Members as Presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Beth?
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. All board members voted in favor.
My motion carries seven zero. Yep.
Can we just take a moment to recognize that Melissa put enormous amounts of work into this? And we've circled around the things and we've readdressed and we've rewritten and we've just done so much work. And she's, she's led us through this and, and it was a heavy lift and thank you.
That's awesome. All right, moving on then to the board meeting schedule, you can see the attached document. We have policy operations and education committee meetings all on March 28th. And then all of those ahead of our next regularly scheduled board meeting on April 11th. Unless anybody has anything else around agenda setting, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Some would. Second.
All in favor? Aye opposed. And that concludes our regularly scheduled board meeting. Have a great night.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.